You ready?
Five fifteen.
Call the meeting you ordered. Everybody's here except for Bob. He's got other commitments with the recent storm. So he will not be here tonight. If you'd all like to stand, the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Any additions or substructions from the agenda?
No, our next presenter, next month though, our next meeting, we'll have the MCA data and Ms. Chappie will be putting that together for us.
All right.
How exciting.
Looking for approval of the current agenda as it stands? Motion by Kurt.
A second.
Second by Katie. All in favor?
No discussion?
Aye.
You want discussion? They said fast. No scheduled presenter. Public input. If anybody, individuals that has any complaints should be handled privately with billing administrator or the superintendent. Comments from visitors must be informational in nature, not to exceed three to five minutes per issue. Does anybody have any? Five once, one twice. Moving on. Consideration through the finance report.
Again, the report is already starting up this school year and the auditors are coming through and doing their third work. So just the cash flow worksheet we're at, so real simple, what we saw at the last board meeting. Up at the top you see our bank account balances. The schools here have about 2.7 million in cash and projected out through the whole fiscal year of not having to do any anticipation strategic borrowing. A couple items just to kind of note as we go through on that left column of numbers. The county taxes, the good you in the quarter column, as they collect their tax payments, the second half of the calendar 2018 tax year, we'll get those actual notes sent in. Right now they're just estimates as we go down. And also what you kind of note, when we have periods of the tax receipts coming in, usually our ideas can either pay from the state of Minnesota, it will decrease to kind of have a little bit of offset or balance. Other than that, nothing real outstanding in the cash flow through mid-December. Like I said, working pretty hard going through, cleaning up again, audit draft, ready to present the next time we have our finance portion of the board meeting. That's been going pretty well. Not ready to tell any numbers we're at right now, but at least the process so far has been going pretty smooth and clean in terms of the district and their position in the stuff we do financially doing well. So if you have any questions, I can certainly do my best to answer what you have.
Do you have anything for Josh?
I have a question about the manuals.
Thank you.
Yep.
Because I'm asking.
Yeah, it's a go back to back in the old day before we actually wrote checks in-house. Manuals would be like a small batch of checks, so manual checks that we do by hand.
Okay.
Not really just automated, we do it all in-house. But back in the day, you actually have to send a batch out to the region in Mankato, they write the checks, mail them back to you, then you distribute them. So much more efficient this way, but the title's just the throwback to the old way we did it. So a manual batch would be a small batch of checks. Usually your utility bills are going to be paid and those sorts of things, officials, conferences, things that need to be paid on a more weekly basis. Otherwise, most bills are paid through, you'd see the board bills on there for your approval at each business meeting.
So is this a new process?
No, it's only been that way. We've just.
Got a bunch this time?
No, it may just be a little more. I usually put them in there every.
That's what I think is.
Every week. So if there's a time anywhere, maybe a couple of weeks where there's not a whole lot of stuff in between them, we might see a bunch of manuals next to each other. But no, it's the same process, been there forever.
Okay. Well, thanks.
See that there was.
One per week.
Sure.
So through the mid-December, I guess.
Anything else for Josh? Looking for motion to approve the finance report?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Brenda.
Oh, second.
Second or none. All in favor? Say aye. All right. Passes. Discussion. Items under consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Take a minute or so to review the consent agenda items.
Just a special thanks to Gemini, Cannonball's Football Booster Club, Kennedy Law, and Doug Noreen at Liberty's Restaurant. Again, just people continuing to give to the school and we really appreciate everything that they do for us.
Five six zero three eight. I'm just wondering what the electrical services were for that. Do you know, Brenda?
So throughout the end of the summer, we've been wrapping up and doing some work on drops for TV. So that's a portion of it, but a large part of it is also the fire, giving up the code and the lighting for the verduetti at the elementary school.
That was to put us in compliance with code.
Now, what's the United Rentals, five six one one zero?
They'll come in and service and inspect the lift that we have, the one lift that we do.
Oh, okay.
The driveable one that you think is most of the jack.
So they, and so repair needs, so it needs some repair.
Yeah, so go through the machine, make sure everything's safe, compliant with any thing in case like a motion ever comes in.
Okay.
Go through the machine so it's not cheap.
Did that need any repairs or was it?
They would have.
I think so.
I don't think there's anything that's major to it.
It's kind of like the inspection of the elevator.
So that's how jack let's that we have?
That's what we do, that driveable one.
They'll come in and charge that price for, really?
Yeah.
Is it possible to get someone else in for that?
Well.
It seems pretty high.
Sure check.
Over a thousand dollars and I'm not, but that's, that seems high just.
Yeah, I would not be willing to see if they didn't make it replace in that. I would assume the electrical wiring that needed replaced, it was a three standard. Better if you want to stop by and note it, actually for the invoice itself, just kind of break it up, see where.
No, I don't question that. It seems kind of bad.
But it is a lot like that elevator. It's the same thing where it's like, how can you charge that? But then when you call to check, because I was really upset last time about the elevator and that's just what they charge.
Yeah, okay.
Crazy, something that's never used.
Yeah, yeah.
Five six one zero one for the parking lot repair.
Yep.
What was that supposed to come in at?
So.
I thought that was like seventy-five.
One fifteen, one sixteen was the.
Was that what we approved for the parking lot, over a hundred thousand?
Yep, one fifteen.
Budget we had planned for about a hundred fifty thousand and by the time we really worked out with, it would be, is cul-de-sac or any additional that he needs to do, Mason Class Five you talked about, will be a little under budget of that. But the project as such with the chip seal and the paint lines, one fifteen, one sixteen.
We did save quite a bit. I was surprised by doing it all at once. Yeah, that doesn't set us up for the next time we have to do it. It kind of, it's nice when you can rotate lots. For that reason, you're not hit at the same time, but actually that price did come down quite a bit by doing it all at the same time, so it's good.
I think especially with the contractor that did come in and do it, they're used to doing much larger projects even though they have their, so for them to break apart would probably not be able for them as well, just do a whole thing.
Very true. I don't know if I agree, what was the total that you expected to be?
About a hundred and sixteen, a hundred fifteen, a hundred sixteen thousand dollars.
That's what we bet.
Yep.
You think it'll come in right around there?
Oh, it is. This is the final plan.
That's the final plan.
Yeah. And that was a court, so we're good on that.
Okay.
Anything else? Looking for motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt.
Second.
Second by Katie. Any other discussion? All in favor to approve the consent agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes, there's no old business, move into new business. Consideration to approve revised policy six twenty-five animals in school and classrooms.
We talked a little bit this, about this on the first reading. There is a difference between therapy dogs and service animals in general. What we did is, I know you guys like to have it highlighted, what is changed, so you'll see that in the purple. A therapy dog can be present in schools and classrooms only when the following conditions are, have been met. And the difference here is, a service animal can come with a child, maybe with special needs, and we have to just accept that animal. This one, they have to have certificates. You'll see that there's a zero bite policy. The handler has to be trained. That's another big piece of this. And the certificates will stay with us up in the district office. I do see this already being implemented at the elementary. I think it'll go district-wide in no time, but just, just so the board understands the differences, but we are going to put them all under policy six twenty-five because it's all animals that just seem to make the most sense. So if you have any specific questions, I can answer those. Jennifer has become quite the expert in this policy, so if you have any things specifically on therapy dogs or therapy animals, I think that she could help answer those. But the changes are in purple.
What's the process that you take to see if the child needs, if the child's requesting that?
So like.
Like, how does it work? Do they, the child requests to you and then you decide if it's appropriate or not?
So, well, the one that we have currently in the classroom right now that has followed our policy is being used by one full classroom.
Okay.
So what we're looking at right now is, does referral data change by having an animal in the classroom? Do reading scores change by having an animal in the classroom? All research says to that is yes. Yes, it will change and behaviors will decrease. So in this particular situation, it is kind of limited to the classroom. As the dog becomes more familiar with the building and, you know, I will be honest, my dog is currently in training right now. I don't know what that'll look like, but it'll be as a need basis. I can foresee the social worker using small groups, friendship groups with the dog, and just really would, it'll kind of be like an as-needed basis. If there's a child in crisis, whether, whatever that might be, it does, and includes the adults in the building. It lowers that blood pressure in the building and we're just excited to see what, what can happen with it. So, I think what you're thinking maybe is a service dog is going to be on an individual need basis.
Okay.
And, and just like.
Therapy's.
Yeah. So therapy is just more, it's going to be a full spectrum. At some point, all kids will be in contact or could be in contact if they're not.
Well, and we've had some parents that have requested, you know, their, their child is allergic or something like that, we wouldn't put them in those classrooms, you know, those type of things. So I know that has been probably the biggest concern because for so long we said no dander in the school, no things like that, but the benefits are outweighing the negatives and right now we don't have any students listed with an allergy. Is that correct?
Yep.
What about severe phobias or, like, do you, you know, my nephew for one would have, would be terrified just knowing that there's one in the school. So what, what do you do with kids like that?
We're just, we're sensitive to it. If we know where it's at, you know, I've had two cases, one of which child's afraid of the dog, but the parents would have loved if they could have chosen the classroom because they felt like if you have this dog who's trained.
Sure.
To basically sit and look pretty, you know what I mean? So, but then we did have another one who was like, I think it could backfire, so let's probably not do it. So I think it's just really based on the, the student need.
Okay.
And then this is different than an emotional support dog too, whereas there isn't hardly any training within that. So the amount of hours of training that the current therapy dog has had is in the hundreds of hours, so, and the tests that have to be passed in order for.
And you have one right now?
We have one right now, yep.
But keep in mind, we have a lot of control over the therapy animals. We have a lot of say in that. We have a lot of, you know, documentation. Service animals just kind of come to us.
Sure.
So that, that is a big difference.
Do the service animals then just come with the individual child? Could that service animal's their animal at home too?
That would be correct.
Is that right?
Yep.
And in that case, the child isn't a certified handler, but the dog, or in this case, dogs
go with the child.
Gotcha.
So I'm a little bit confused as reading about the therapy, but down below the purpose of this policy, if therapy dogs, any dog, read that a selected, trained, and tested provides specific physical or therapeutic functions and that they're direct in control of a qualified handler. Who's the handler and how is that being paid for and what is the specific function that they're being trained for, physical or therapeutic?
So the handler is going to be the person who's trained with the dog. So that, and then the handler can train other handlers, if that makes sense, based on what the dog, okay.
So is there a certificate of handling that we'll have in the district office that says who can be the handler?
Yes, yep. So, yep, so right now, now, we, we might have a different adult in the building that might take the animal out for a bathroom break. That one, that's, that person will also have gone through some training with the handler. But the trained handler, which means whose classroom it's in, or in my case, if my dog were to ever come and pass the test, you know, it's whoever's going to be handling the dog with a group of students.
So it's a teacher or someone on staff already?
Yes, yep.
There would be no pay, we can't.
Right.
Pay for handler to come to school.
But who, who owns the liability if that dog were to bite a kid?
Yep.
The school or the trainer or?
The school.
The school and also.
See, that's.
And the certificate where it's come under pet partners also comes with its own umbrella policy, so.
Why, why is the school liable for that?
Your child, if the dog was to bite on the school, because we've allowed, I mean, it's in our parameters. It, it is our liability if a dog bites.
Then why would I take that risk?
Because some of the benefits Jennifer was just talking about.
Because there's plenty of benefits that.
And again, that's why it's up for discussion. I mean, this isn't a, you don't have to, but you know, we're.
How do you screen out who shouldn't, shouldn't have therapeutic dogs or service, service animals, I understand, but.
Well, we let pet partners take care of that.
And they are.
And that is the association that's got, that's one of the most highly recommended associations to go through for training of the animals and the handlers.
So in this situation, is it up to the district as to whether or not we accept these type of services and animals or we're, is this something that we have to do?
Service animals you have to.
Right.
You have therapy, it's a choice.
But service comes specifically with a student that are IEP.
It's written, yes.
Correct, yeah. So there's no question on that, but I guess with the therapy, and I was thinking, I guess more of the emotional support animal, but we've got in our policy a specific physical or therapeutic function.
Mm-hmm.
Well, when the animal comes in, will there be a specific therapeutic function or physical, something specific that they're going to be here for, which is blanking that we're going to have a, a dog in a second grade class?
So if we have a student in crisis, so their house burns down, I mean, going through a divorce, we want to make them feel as welcome, as safe as we can in the building. So some students relate to that being adult and some might relate it to being a comfort animal. So the therapeutic portion of that to me is lowering that stress level in any way we can.
So the dog won't be here all school days?
No, I think they start as a very minimal schedule. You typically introduce it at a day or two a week, and that might be the forever schedule.
Do they have a designated, designated area for, to take them outside?
Yep, so that's not going to be anywhere near the back of the area where students would be at. It would be the side area of the building. Just like the service animal, right? We have to be able to offer them a space to go. And I will say, I mean, I'm going to be honest, the level of training that a service dog has to have versus a therapy dog.
Yep.
Is way different.
Well, let me ask, a different question has to do with the animals also. If you have a service dog, same, same question, I guess, if that bites another student, who owns that? The people who own the service dog or the school district?
We actually did have a service dog, I can get, one of our repair professionals. Sharon, do you want to allude to that?
I honestly don't even know that much about it. I heard about it after the fact.
Who owns the liability?
We don't have any options to let service dogs get into.
I know, but who owns the liability?
We do, if they're in the building.
I don't understand why the district own liability, if it's, we're required to allow it to happen, why does the school district own the liability if the school doesn't own it?
Of the state.
I understand.
It's no different than if someone falls on a ladder and the ladder collapses, you know, those types of things. It's, it's in our buildings, we just, we have that liability.
That's different though, in my opinion. That's an adjective or something, somebody bringing in a, in a dog. And you mentioned someone was nipped, but did we didn't, did we stick to policy to, what's a nip and what's a bite then? You know, because if it's nip, the dog's gone too, or if it's a bite, the dog's gone.
Just remember that the service dog, they, if there is no zero.
And they don't have to provide documentation of, of training either.
And if there is a nip or anything, a service animal, we cannot.
So potentially, could we have ten dogs, ten animals running around the school because we think that therapeutic dog?
I don't ever foresee us going in that direction, but.
I don't know. I'm just pulling a little devil's advocate here. It just seems like we could be getting ourselves into a.
I think if people wanted to go through the training and spend thousands of dollars to have a trained, I think we could go on a rotation. I don't ever see their, what, you know what I mean? I mean, like, I don't see that happening. I think that would get a little bit too much.
I, I think I know where Kurt's kind of going with this, and it does make sense. You know, the policy I, I like is, but it might be lacking in some things now. Do we have any control over the number of animals or the number of requests, the approval and denial process?
That's, that's all in my office.
Okay, but it's not part of this policy?
It is, it says the superintendent's office holds that and can, I can, I can deny them as well.
And how do you use that criteria sometimes and then watch one of them say no?
Truthfully, I would probably listen to my principals if there was a specific need, if there was a specific service group they were going to be working with, I would have them, just like the one that is, that's coming now, there's a specific reason for it and it's, we're kind of collecting data with that. If it ends up being a distraction or if my custodian came forward and said, oh my gosh, the amount of hair in that classroom, or, or something like that, it's kind of a pilot program, but I have no problem denying when it gets to be too many, I mean, when it doesn't make sense and we're just bringing a therapy dog to school because the teacher has a trained dog, that doesn't make sense to me. So I don't, I don't have a problem denying those.
Can a student request a therapy dog? Specifically?
They would have to go through.
Because in our policy, it says it has to be a staff or, and that, there would be a trained handler, and they don't train children as handlers, so.
But if they provide a handler?
What's that?
If they provide the handler.
If they provide their own handler, then I guess it would need to be a service dog. Because emotional support dogs aren't allowed.
Right, but that's why I'm kind of curious, if there's, if someone's going to come in and come to that animal, would we, you know?
I guess we'd have to address that if it happens.
Okay.
I do think this is doing what's best for kids.
So that piece of file under the Minister of Bradley, District Lieutenant.
So is the school paying for any of the training or is the handler?
No, absolutely not.
Nope.
So now that was something that came to the.
It did come to, there are plenty of districts.
The training, yeah.
At this point, I, I wouldn't be comfortable with that, but I do like what they're doing with the, with the therapy dogs. I really do like what's coming from it.
How do you see it handling or the other students reacting? Does it distract them in any way, that sort of thing?
Well, like Beth said, we're still in, you know, kind of a pilot. The goal is, is that they started, you know, the school year with it and are, you know, actually just started last week, but they're going to get used to it. And it was interesting talking to the teacher, hearing her say like, you would not believe what it's like knowing, I mean, some of the pictures she's sending me of these kids laying on their bellies, reading a book right next to this dog with one hand on the dog, like it's, it's pretty impressionable. So I think that as, as, it's just like anything, you build expectations in your classroom from a first year, a first day teacher, and you develop those expectations with those kids and they'll, they'll get it. And it'll become just a, whatever they do.
Just one more question on the liability. When it's a therapeutic dog, if they bite, there's no tolerance?
Zero.
Now, if it's a service dog and they bite, what happens then?
Zero. Well, we have a, we have a meeting with those parents, but there is really nothing we can do, but we do.
So if the dog bites, we have to keep the dog in the school?
A service dog.
That doesn't sound right. If it's a threat to the kids, other people, we can't have that either.
But it's providing a specific service to an individual that's requiring it bite a dog.
But if that dog is a threat to other people in the school, that doesn't make sense to me.
And I would try to, I would.
What's that point? I'm sorry.
I would try to argue that as much as I can with, but it, it comes from an IEP. It would take an IEP meeting to do that. We would obviously hope that the parents would work with us, but again, it, it really is the law. If they have it, they have it.
But if there are laws, there's laws against biting animals too, so those would come into play as well, right? You would think.
I can't, I was. I can't deny anything. So, last question.
We're just talking about approving the provisions to the policy.
Six twenty-five is written, you've got that already through MSBA, so your items are in black. I've already been approved, but the, the purple is what you're approving to now.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Trying to make some motions?
The revised policy six twenty-five animals is those of past years.
I have a second. Second by Rob. Any other discussion?
So just real quick, there is no possibility of the districts of these animals to come in as a therapy dog?
Nope. That's all paid for by the handler.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes, five zero. Consideration to approve the 2018, 2019, our coach, pet coaches.
Jake is here, if you have any questions, they are on the screen as well. What were your final debate numbers? Is that a go or a not go?
Wednesday's the deadline.
Right now?
They, they're at six right now, he's only need ten, so I sent him a reminder again today. He's got his email distribution that says like eleven given on it, so.
Make sure that they get that in because we need to follow what the board is like, so hopefully they have that by Wednesday. Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt.
A second.
Second by Katie. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Consideration to approve a medical leave starting nine twenty-four eighteen.
That started today. Kylie Reich is in need of a medical leave.
Make a motion to approve. A little second.
Motion by Katie, second by Brenda. Any other discussion? All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
That passes, five nothing. Consideration to approve the FY nineteen proposed levy certification at maximum.
Yeah, that'll be my recommendation to go ahead and approve this at the max, like you've done the last eight years of Ben here. It's always wise to do that. you've done the last eight years of Ben here, it's always wise to do that, it gives you as much room as you may need. But we're going to turn it over to Josh, we've got some really great news, really, really great news to move forward with tonight.
Normally you have an attachment, but State Minnesota actually just sent this out, two or three updating numbers, usually daily, in the last couple of weeks. Now, actually, it was several times today that they updated numbers, so this is the most recent. And as nearly all of the adjustments in it that we had needed to get done, there were some issues with some debt service and OTFM, but everything now is kind of cleaned up and rolled into where we have now a document that we can present to the board. So what you're looking at is leviation and certification for the two thousand eighteen payable, two thousand nineteen levy. The overall levy in total will be about a little less than four percent or three point eighty-eight percent increase from last year's levy in total, includes every fund, general, community debt service, and OPEB debt service. The general fund itself will increase about six point three percent from the prior year. Couple of reasons for that is the safe school levy has become a bit more broad and open to where it's something that our district can go out and feel good about, asking the taxpayers to pay for, and so that levy is included in our general fund, as well as now there's a sunset clause in our teachers' negotiation contract that allows us to levy for some retiree benefits, which also helps the district in the final fund here, the OPEB debt service, as this will be the last year we'll be able to kind of take money from the OPEB debt service to help pay for retiree benefits. So the timing of it to get it sunsetted and get it set into motion and now to be able to levy is, is a good timing for us. So the general levy itself, about six point three percent increase. Community service, the community ad and activities stays pretty much plus or minus zero, about a quarter percent decrease. General debt service, the one point nine percent increase in debt service, you see, the state has a mechanism in place that if we have an excess in debt, they automatically reduce our debt. We had such an instance last year where we had some excess debt reduction. Remember that this is only comparing prior year to this year's levy, so because we had a reduction in excess debt last year, our levy for debt service was towards normalized where our payments are due, so you see a slight bump there, one point nine percent increase. And again, that's just basically taking care of our mortgage payments or our debt payments for facilities. Then the final one is the OPEB debt service, and that's will be, the last time we really go out for our OPEB debt, there was a bond ten years ago, we got a million dollar bond to help offset some of our costs for the retiree benefits. And we had it set up to pay over ten years, so it's worked out well, but you'll see just a slight increase there too. And again, that's just based on the, along with the payment of the debt service. So all in all, you know, I think in terms of what you may have seen around the area for levy increases, whether they're local governments or other school districts, I think we're sitting in a pretty good spot in terms of our levy increase for the year, three point eighty-eight percent. I know I've seen several that are double digits, so. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer, like I said, it just is just the most recent and updated version of today and the most presentable to the, to the board. I'm telling you, there were quite a few variances and things.
I'm sure we got three or four emails just today.
Yeah.
It's, it's really a lot of changes.
So.
Impacts.
Kind of go back to the, the start of this portion of the board meeting, when Mesquese is talking about approving the levy at the max, it's best to approve the levy at the maximum, so priority variations or fluctuations, we're not stuck to a certain dollar amount. If we say that we're going to do it at this dollar amount, then if there are, either the ADM's change or, you know, harmless change with our debt service, we're stuck at that dollar amount. So the best is to certify at maximum, we don't actually approve an amount until the final levy approval, which I believe is in December of truth and taxation. If you have a question, I can try my best to answer for you.
Anyone have anything for Josh? Looking for motion to approve the proposed levy certification at maximum?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Kurt.
A second.
Second by Katie, any other discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Informational items, the next school board meeting is at six PM October eighth. We cover an annual assurance of compliance, and Ms. Chappie is going to have some MC presentation. Anything else from the board? Anything from you?
No, I think we're.
I'll look for motion to dismiss. Close the meeting.
I was going to mention Bomber Spirit Night, right?